And so we'll start with our 7:15 agenda, a master plan update. I think nothing has happened in the update of the master plan since our last meeting. So if everyone is in accord, we'll move on. Next will be a fairly short discussing, discussion of housing issues at 7:20. At 7:30, which is in 10 minutes, we'll take up the main item for tonight's meeting. A public hearing of the zoning articles to be presented at town meeting this year. There are four articles. We'll take the, two of the, two small articles first on non-conforming lots and non-conforming building, non-conforming buildings and a temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments. These are two really just corrections of the bylaws. Then we'll consider the open space subdivision bylaw and finally the affordable housing or inclusionary zoning bylaw. Next on the agenda, a hearing regarding the update of the subdivision rules and regulations of the planning board. Then at nine o'clock, we'll discuss any new issues in town center. And finally, at 9:15, any other business that may come before the board. So we have 10 minutes before we begin the hearing. Are there any new developments in the arena of housing? For example, the Coolidge Street developments, Hunting Lane or 41 North Main?
Well, I'm not sure that would be considered new, but for people who may not be aware, the developers of that, of those two projects, Pulte being the developers of Meadowbrook Commons, the age restricted project with 67 units, of which seven are affordable, and then Baystone Development, who is the developer of the 40B apartment complex right next door. They will be, at least as of now, they are scheduled to be on the agenda of the select board meeting of April 9th to present an update. I do know that they have been in contact with Framingham and Natick regarding utility connections, which are proposed to be private utilities. And there is a warrant article to grant an easement in the roadways so that those private utilities can be accessed. And I think that's the major update on those projects. Oh, one other thing, they have been going through the Conservation Commission for their delineation of wetlands. That's underway as well.
This is the, the affordable housing rental development has been at CONCOM or Board of Health or the elderly affordable?
I think it's both. It's, it's the, it's mostly, at a minimum, it's the apartment, it's the 40B apartment development, but I think it, they're delineating the entire two parcels.
That would affect, affect both parcels?
Yes.
Okay. Any new developments at 41 North Main since we last discussed?
No, I believe it's still in the hands of Mass Housing and they're reviewing the comments that were submitted, as well as the rebuttal by the developer. And so it's just a matter of waiting for, for that to take place.
And at 31 Hunting Lane, is there any update from the last time we looked at plans for those properties?
No.
Okay.
No, still the same.
So we'll leave that. Are there any other housing issues, Addie May, that we should know about?
Not, not really. Um, no, we're kind of, is there something I'm thinking, I feel like I'm forgetting something, but what we, what's on your mind?
Oh, not related, not directly related, but I was just gonna note that it's, the US Census is about to take place. The census will be as of April 1st, which is in just about two weeks, two and a half weeks. And that will, that affects us in the sense that for the last 10 years, we've been using as a base number of housing units, 1,479, because that's what the 2010 census showed. And our 40B requirement is 10% of that number. It'll take about a year to calculate all the numbers, but starting about a year from now, our number will increase by however many units that get counted as of April 1st.
What's your estimate is to what the new denominator will be?
I haven't, you know, done an exact count or estimate, but roughly off the top of my head, I would say 1550, somewhere in that range.
They're adding about, adding about 100 units?
Yeah, well, 80 or so, 70.
The houses that are partially built, say at 59 North Main, but not yet occupied, do they count?
No.
It has to be occupied houses?
At least completed. They can be vacant, but not under construction.
They have to be completed.
Yes.
Yeah. We have two developments then, that are only partially built and that are, you know, nothing is holding them up probably except sales at this point.
Correct.
Quitney Farms and 59 North Main.
And, and the Fields.
And the Fields, yes, of course.
So in a way, we're kind of lucky that they, that they haven't been built to date. Our number will be lower because those aren't, those projects aren't completed.
Do you know what the estimated occupation time is for the Fields? Are they being sold at the moment?
I think there are people living in them now.
Yeah, yeah, they're being sold for sure.
Okay.
Those units are, some of those units are occupied. But I am surprised on 59 North Main was moving along so quickly and now it seems to be that there's a slowdown. Have you heard of any reason?
No, I haven't heard anything. It's probably just sales.
Probably just sales. It looks like they have two affordable units in that group so far.
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Yeah. So there, there's a certain formula they have to follow, right? In, well, in terms of building, they've built, they have to build three affordable units, as I recall. They've built two of them. So nothing should be stopping them.
No, that shouldn't be holding them up now because they, they've already built two of the three, so they should be able to finish out, finish it up as soon as they have the sales.
Good. Well, while we're waiting for 7:30 to start our hearings, oh, we can't jump down to town center because that is a timed issue.
No, but it's not a hearing, it's just, it's just a...
So we can talk about things under, let's try to do that.
Okay.
In the couple of minutes we have. Maybe, Gino, you can update us, if there is any update, on Jameson Field testing or any other issues in town center that you know about.
The only update on that is that we don't have a final report because it involves monitoring the, the water levels in the monitoring pipes that were installed when they did the soil testing back in November, I think it was. So spring season is obviously when the water levels are, the groundwater levels are highest. So they've, they've been taking a reading every month. And I don't think they've done the March one yet, but we want to at least get into April and get April's reading as well before we get a final report.
Do you think the levels are lower this year because of the lack of snow and...
I would think so.
You'd think so.
But there are adjustment factors too that, that are generally used, but, so I don't, I don't know.
So we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
Also, there was surveying done for, in preparation for engineering work for the sidewalks by, from Abbey Road. Is that, is that any further than beyond that area?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, though. That, that's, should be ready to go out to bid again soon.
Yeah.
Along with the, the Whitney Farm Trail to connect to the Upper Charles Trail and, and the signage for Pine Hill School.
That sidewalk's only though to Cemetery Lane?
No, I thought it was a little further than, it was a little further than that, up to the, the crossing where the, the lighted, the lighted crosswalk.
Yeah, little by little. I noticed that our, our next meeting, we'll be hearing from a representative of a citizens group that is working on a lighted, a, a user activated lighted crosswalk between the pilgrim church and that little shopping area and, and town hall down below the church. So little by little, we're trying to connect town center.
Yes.
We have a long way to go. All right. It is in 10 seconds, it will be 7:30. So I'd like to open the hearing for the four zoning articles being sponsored by the planning board for this year's town meeting. Gino, if you don't mind, could we start with the two smaller articles and maybe read the title of the article and explain essentially what it is?
Sure. Just before I do that, we have a message from our chairman suggesting that, to mention that the, which you already did, but I'm not sure if it was on TV, that we may recess in order to do...
Oh, thank you.
Do the Affordable Housing Trust presentation next door, and then we would resume if that happens.
Right.
And also that it may be advisable for people to stay at home and they can text questions or comments, if they're watching, to my email address, which is planning@sherburnma.org. And our chairman is in the process of doing that. He will chime in, I'm sure, as we go along.
All right.
Okay, so now to the articles.
Let me just say one thing. Thank you, John, for watching over us, even from your remote site. Apparently, we do need it. Yeah, we, we are going to, let me just explain the recess for a second a little better for, for the hundreds of people watching at home. We, we do have to...
Someone coming in here?
Oh, we can, yes. In fact, let me say right now that we're going to recess from our hearing, which we have opened, but we have to recess immediately because one of the zoning articles needs to be presented to advisory at this point. So with apologies to our...
Wait. I thought we were going, are we going early?
I guess. I told them to call us when, when they were ready for us.
They were left on the agenda.
They wanted to know.
All right. It seems that we are recessing now to go to the advisory meeting where the Affordable Housing bylaw and the Housing Trust bylaw will be presented for vetting by, by advisory. So stay tuned, we'll be back.
After these messages.
After these messages. Okay, the planning board hearing is now resuming after our recess to meet with advisory. It's now 8:35 and we're resuming with the planning board articles for town meeting. We'll start with the two short articles. Gino, would you present these two articles?
Yes. The one I'll start with first is the temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments. That was simply something that was put in place after the 2016 vote to legalize recreational marijuana, to, to provide time for the town to establish regulations. It expired in 2018 and in the meantime, the town has adopted permanent prohibitions on marijuana establishments, so it's just taking up space in the zoning bylaw. So it's just simply gets, takes it off because it's not in effect. The second one, it has to do with changes to non-conforming structures on conforming lots and conforming structures on non-conforming lots in cases where currently, in either situation, if someone wants to put an addition on the house, even if it, even if the addition meets all current zoning requirements, they have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a finding, what's called a section six finding, that the, the addition does not increase the nonconformity and is no more detrimental to the neighborhood. So this bylaw would provide a little bit of relief from that so that if, as long as the addition is conforming, that you could skip that step of going to the ZBA, you could just get a zoning, a building permit directly from the building inspector, and as long as the addition does not exceed 1,000 square feet. In cases where a non-conforming structure is on a non-conforming lot, or the addition does not conform, you would still need to go to ZBA. That, that's it.
There was some question about the allowed, allowed size of the addition, and that was resolved with ZBA?
By putting in the, the limit of 1,000 square feet.
Great. So this is a hearing on those bylaws. We've heard this before at planning board. This is mainly for the public to be informed on these two bylaw proposals. They will come up at town meeting. We should probably repeat that anyone at home that has questions or comments or concerns about any of these bylaws can call in or text. Is there a text or call number for that, Gino?
Email, I have my email open on my phone, so anyone could email at planning@sherburnma.org.
Okay, great.
Do we want to accept call-ins? We could do that, I suppose.
I think we need to. It's a hearing and it's an open meeting.
Okay. Our lines are open.
Call now.
Just kind of to note, the first two articles that we just talked about, those are considered really housekeeping, cleaning up language. They're not anything real substantive.
Right. They're, it's just administrative, really. You know, we, I did propose that we next take the open space subdivision bylaw, but on second thought, this is also the night of the hearing for the subdivision rules and regulations of the planning board hearing. So it might make more sense to do the subdivision bylaw and the rules and regulations hearing together. One sort of would fall into the other. Addie May, are you able to present the affordable housing bylaw at this point? Can, we can hook up your computer, I believe.
Sure.
Oh, wait, yes. I'm gonna think about that. I'm not sure what we're doing. Sorry. Yeah, let's just see if you have the right...
I've got...
Wait a second, let's see if you have a port.
No.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, amend that. Addie May, you'll have to present it in the same way you just did at advisory?
No, I...
Or would you like to continue? I think we can't continue it because we have to present it.
Can I try emailing it to your computer?
You can try. Mm-hmm.
Should, I should have done it.
What did I do?
No, I did the wrong thing.
Oh, okay.
I didn't turn up the volume for the people at home, so you might want to tell them the fact on 8:30.
If we're successful in getting the file from Addie's computer to mine. That remains to be seen. Can you email it to my Gmail account?
Yeah, I thought I just did, just checking to see, did you get anything?
I'm, I'm still booting up.
I thought it was organized and prepared. Apologies.
You want to turn it to me, I can get it on the screen.
You can get the computer on the screen? Or can we just, can I just project it and can you get the screen in your, in your view? Okay, it looks like I've got the PowerPoint version. Focus. I think that's about as good as it's going to get. Okay.
Okay, so the affordable housing bylaw, which essentially is also known as inclusionary zoning, it requires new real estate development to include affordable housing. This is for all new real estate development, not including single-family houses. So, so if you want to go to the next slide, Mary, since you've got, why do we need an affordable housing bylaw? The state does not have enough affordable housing. That's where the pressure state created, matched on the law, chapter 40B, which we are familiar with, enabling housing developers to circumvent local zoning for communities that don't have 10% affordable housing. The bylaw requires all new development of two or more housing units to build or help fund affordable housing, and it will help us reach and stay above our 10% affordable housing goal. So these are, again, to control what type of development do we have in Sherburne once we finally do reach 10%. So this is really targeted for subdivisions, where, again, it's anything with more than one unit. So not a single-family house, not a lot that gets torn down and a, and a house built.
It would also be for any multi-unit development, right?
Right, any multi-unit.
Elderly affordable or, yeah.
So it has a, a formula that allows for, if it's less than six units, so one through, well, that we, two through five, it should have changed, I thought we changed that to two to five.
Yeah.
So that slide, did I not pull up the, shoot, did I not pull up the right slide? This is where we worked on this so many times, we have too many different versions. But it should be two through five payment in lieu. There's no payment in lieu required on a single-family house construction. Units six, for six and more units, there's 15% for affordable. There's a calculation for if it's half unit, then we ask for it to be rounded up when we're calculating for how many units will need to be constructed affordable. And there's always the option to do, if it's two units affordable, to do one affordable unit construct and the rest in a payment in lieu. I guess we can go to the next slide. And there's standards that are out there, so the same standards that chapter 40B applies for Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for the building standards. These will apply also for the state, in order to make sure that any affordable units count on our SHI. On-site affordable units are permitted by right. Anything, and we also, though, allow off-site affordable units. So if you have a development and you need to, a developer needs to add one affordable unit, they can do that affordable unit elsewhere with the right approvals. So there are options to be creative.
Addie May, may I ask a question? If onsite affordable units are by right, does that imply that affordable units off-site require a special permit?
It's, yes. That it would have to be approved, right? If off-site would, it's not a special permit.
Special permit, yes.
Yeah, special permit, okay. Yeah. So if it, it's by right for it to be onsite, and if a developer wants to do something different, they would come before the planning board and, and explain, and we would have the ability to grant or not grant a special permit for that. And the payment in lieu would be made to the Affordable Housing Trust in order, that's where we've established for funds to be collected for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in Sherburne.
And this looks like the, the equation that you have in the bylaw. Here you say two-year median sale price of market rate. Is that one year, it's supposed to be one year or two years?
Two years.
Twenty-four months.
Oh, 24 months.
Yes, 24 months. So two years median, in order to calculate what the median sale price is.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd have N being, so the, the number of affordable units would be the, multiplied by the market rate minus the amount of affordable house sale in order to get the required payment. So, and the affordable price is calculated... and the affordable price is calculated by DHCD. So, it's a, there's a standard and there's formulas. So, projects with six or more units, just as an example, same thing as the slide before, that if it's fewer than six, then there's a payment in lieu that's calculated. But if it's six or more, then it's the number of units times the median sales price for the market rate calculated out of, based on twenty-four year, twenty-four-month average, minus the affordable price set by DHCD. For the next slide, which has some examples. I think there's a repeat of that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the wrong slide set.
Wrong slide set?
John, John sent it.
He's coming.
Oh, okay.
Now, I did that.
Okay, apologies to our audience at home. We have to put up a different slide set.
This was an alternatives, this was an altern, had some alternative calculations for the, for the payment and such that John had worked out. But it doesn't match what's in the bylaw. It's a slight, not totally different, but just slightly different.
Okay, back to email. Let's see if I got another email.
It should be in Dropbox.
Yeah, it's in, it's in Dropbox.
It's in Dropbox.
But he said, he said he was emailing it.
Okay, it's easier, faster for me to get if he emails, but I don't have an email yet from him.
If you go into Dropbox.
I'll go into Dropbox. Okay. Okay, let's look for Dropbox. I think it's in here. Dropbox.
It's, um,
okay, I'm trying to remember where my Dropbox link is. Sorry, people. This is, there we go.
This is the last time John gets sick. He sent it, why don't you just open, oh, no, yeah, just open up the email that he sent.
I don't have his email yet.
It just came in.
Oh, okay, that's faster than, okay. Back to email. There we go.
So, basically, the whole Inclusionary Zoning is a tool to help us try and stay at or maintain the ten percent, once we get to ten percent. And it's also a tool for, it gives developers an option, they either can construct the affordable units or they can do a payment in lieu, in which the case, the money goes to the Housing Trust, in which would then allow the trustees to find ways to add affordable units if we're needed. We could be at a point, if we're at ten percent, that we, there's creative uses of maintaining or improving.
So, here's the formula for projects with fewer than six units. Basically, it's one-sixth of the cost of what it would be for per affordable housing, for a whole affordable housing unit, times the number of housing units, if it's less than six.
So, the bylaw has language that directs the affordable purchase and rental prices to make sure that it's in compliance with, with DHCD, since everything, the goal is to make sure any affordable units are, will count on SHI list towards the ten percent required. Applicant responsibilities are the same as for all affordable units. There's this marketing and regulatory, indeed, restrictions that require, are required for a unit to be SHI-eligible. And the same calculation for if you're developing a subdivision and you are with a mix of affordable units. There's calculation that DHCD has created would apply. It's the same. And the same in perpetu, perpetuity for affordability would also apply. So, why now? There's, there's a demand for affordable housing. We are at roughly, you could generously round up, say, four percent. So, we're not near ten percent. And this allows, this provides an, an option that would help us, that's separate from forty Bs, in order to ensure that we continue to add affordable units if there's a subdivision, since a subdivision would considerably increase our denominator as far as the number of houses and total housing inventory when you're trying to maintain ten percent affordable units. It provides guidance for, again, what type of developments we'd like to see in Sherburne and has clearly stated rules with the calculations on what, sets the expectation of what we're expecting for how many units affordable and what options they have. And it also provides an option for funding for the Housing Trust if the developer chooses not to build the affordable units and that can be applied in another way. And it is a zoning bylaw, so it does require two-thirds vote.
I mean, as, as we are approving affordable housing, or not approving forty Bs, they're coming anyway. But the ones that we are approving, especially on Coolidge Street, for example, working with that developer, we may reach or almost reach our ten percent goal. So, going forward, this is really crucial, because soon we have a new census count coming up. And that may put us below ten percent, even with all of our new housing. And this will help us keep above the ten percent. So, this is so much better than forty B developments, because the town has a lot to say about it.
Right, unlike forty B, this continues to go before the planning board and the other town boards.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the last slide?
Yes, it is, the last slide. Are there any other comments from the board at this point? We got some good, like, language changes from Advisory, so that'll be updated and it'll be re-presented this coming Saturday at the Advisory Select Board Joint, Joint Meeting for Town Meeting Articles. Thanks, Addie.
Right, the majority of comments from Advisory were things that, just adding glossary and explaining where, places where we've referred to DHCD language and maybe spelling a few of those things out a little bit more.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from home?
Our lines are over.
We're out last call. Seriously, everyone is welcome to chime in. So, shall we move on to the open space subdivision?
That's a little more exciting.
I think so, but, okay.
So, we need your.
Yeah, I can just pull up my slides. You, you might just keep it on the screen, Rick, because I'm going to use. Okay, here's my PDF, here's my, okay. So, now we're moving to the fourth Planning Board Article for Town Meeting. This one is concerned with subdivisions. A lot of people don't realize there are already twenty-five subdivisions in Sherburne. And yet, there's still quite a lot of open space that's not under conservation and not legally protected. Just want to focus that, there, that's a little better. In fact, the, the Land Acquisition Committee that I also sit on has identified over twenty properties that are twenty acres or more. And given the housing pressure now in Boston, we could expect to see new subdivision developments come into, into Sherburne, although for the last decades, there've been very few. So, this bylaw is in anticipation of the possibility that a developer could come to Sherburne looking to build a subdivision. And by state law, a developer has a right to subdivide land and build a subdivision if he or she owns the land. So, how can we control housing development while still maintaining our open space? That's the fundamental problem that we tried to address in the master plan. And this subdivision proposal is a step in that direction. What we'd like to do is allow housing as we need to, but still preserve as much open space as we possibly can. Now, as I said, Massachusetts law does not allow towns to reject subdivision developments outright. The, a developer has a right to build some kind of subdivision by right. But state law doesn't prescribe what kind of subdivision. Up till now, it's been generally assumed that that by-right subdivision is a conventional one, where the lots are all of the size, the regular size of the zoning district and consume the entire parcel, which leaves us no open space. But it seems that towns can pass subdivision bylaws that restrict the, or that control the plans of subdivisions, such that housing is restricted to a smaller part of the subdivision and the rest is preserved as open space. So, this bylaw revision proposes that open space subdivisions that have conservation land included be the by-right option. Developer can do this by right, of course, with a lot of other controls that I'll talk about in a minute. A conventional subdivision would be a deviation from our bylaws and regulations and would require a special permit. So, this new open space subdivision bylaw is a revision of a bylaw that we've had since nineteen ninety-six for open space subdivisions that required a special permit and that preserved only forty percent of the land as open space. This revised bylaw, it preserves sixty percent of the land as open space. And the houses, roads, et cetera, are constricted to forty percent of the property. Of course, this means that housing will be clustered or at least denser than in the rest of the zoning district. The lots could be as big as one acre or as small, or as small as the land will permit. It's important to note that the overall subdivision layout can be determined by the Planning Board in collaboration with the developer and with this, the Board of Public Health and the Conservation Commission, such that the building area is restricted to areas of the land that can, that can support housing. And the open space areas can be placed by the Planning Board to, in areas that are environmentally sensitive and, and should be preserved. So, lot size and arrangement is flexible. The frontage can be reduced on subdivision roads and the setbacks can be smaller. Depending on the ability of the houses to have septic systems and wells, they can be clustered in pocket neighborhoods or other arrangements. Groundwater and wetland protection is always the main concern of Sherburne residents. So, placement of developed areas has to be approved by the Planning Board. The developer can't just put houses where he wants. And of course, we would decide that in collaboration with Board of Health and CONCOM. Since houses may be clustered closer together, it's important that a butters be protected and that the views from our scenic roads be protected. So, we have increased setbacks, both for butters and, and from existing roads. So, those are the essentials. To show how this might work, we've taken one subdivision neighborhood that is, exists in Sherburne. This was built, I think, in the late sixties or seventies. The subdivision is the one down by Parks Drive, Jackson Road and Ward Lane. This is a subdivision with no direct access to preser, to protected open space. It abuts a lot of wetlands, it also abuts Holliston, that's, that green area below. It's not open space, that's Holliston. And you can see that, as it is, it's a very nice subdivision, but the houses and lawns and roads consume the entire parcel. If this had been designed as an open space subdivision using our proposed bylaw, it could look something like this. The conventional subdivision that exists is on the left, an open space design, one of many possible open space designs, is on the right, where the same number of houses that were built in the conventional subdivision are now in a smaller area on the upland part of the subdivision. And you'll note that there's a lot more buffer area between the houses and the wetlands and that the open space has room for trails, bike roads. You could even have a community garden. You could have play areas for kids. It would be a common park. And it could either be owned by the subdivision as a homeowners association, common ownership, or it could be transferred to the town or to a conservation nonprofit organization, in which case it might be opened for all of Sherburne to enjoy. The owner of the property, that is the subdivision or developer, would have the choice as to how that open space is managed. But the important thing is, it would be permanently preserved. Now, it's important to note that even though the design, the open space subdivision on the right would be by right, developers can't do anything they want. There are a lot of controls on subdivision development of any kind. In fact, the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations is forty-four pages long. And we're not going to go through it, you'll be happy to notice right now. But to summarize, the bylaw only covers the, the main uses of the land, the types of houses, dimensions, frontage, setbacks, and certain special permits. Most of what's decided in a subdivision is actually in the rules and regulations. And we're going to have a hearing on that coming up. The rules and regs determine overall site design and building design, infrastructure standards, roads, sidewalks, all kinds of infrastructure, the requirements for environmental data and analysis. And most importantly, they determine the processes for how the subdivision gets approved. And on that note, in this case, the first thing that the Planning Board would do is to have a preliminary discussion with the developer. And we've outlined in our rules and regulations in detail what that preliminary discussion would include. We'd start with the lot, nothing on it, and look at the environmental features and determine which features need, which parts need to be protected. And then, in collaboration with the developer, we would decide where housing can safely be built, such that it doesn't affect our groundwater. The, both the preliminary and definitive plans have a lot of environmental assessment required. The assessment in the definitive plan is quite detailed. And finally, the whole review process would be done in collaboration with the Board of Health and CONCOM, because Health and CONCOM because protection of our well water and wetlands and groundwater is our primary concern. So why would a developer want to do this and why would anyone want to buy such a house? For the developer, the infrastructure costs are lower and there's less pavement, they don't have to go through a special permit process, and it can be marketed as an eco-friendly development with guaranteed access to open space. I should mention that in one town in Westford, in which a developer has to present two alternative plans to the planning board, and the developer has a right to do either, most developments have, most developers have chosen to do an open space design, probably because they see the advantages to their own marketing ability. For the buyer, a lot of people these days don't want to be off in the woods by themselves. They want to have social connections and a kid-friendly environment where the kids can get to each other's houses on bikes or walking. Certainly, the maintenance is easier because you don't have as much land to manage and you have guaranteed access to a big area of open space. How about the town? Well, all in all, there are concerns from the Board of Health and CONCOM about placing septic systems in these subdivisions such that the wetlands and wells are not impacted. And our rules and regulations are dealing with that. We're continuing to work with both boards on that. But in sum, if you have a large area that is not disturbed, it's going to be recharging and retaining rainwater and groundwater much better than a subdivision, than a conventional subdivision. Of course, climate control is a big concern these days, and the more open space and trees, the better we control our climate, both locally and globally. And we think these can be designed such that they preserve the open space and rural atmosphere. Certainly, it preserves a lot of open space over the town. The maintenance cost for the town will be lower, and the tax revenue could be equal or even could be greater because we've seen that houses with two-acre zoning are, have about the same tax evaluation in this town as houses with one-acre zoning. And if zoning is somewhat, if the lots are somewhat less than one acre, still, the fact that they are in an attractive neighborhood with tremendous access to open space will increase the tax revenue, will increase the tax evaluation, I should say, on the houses in an open space subdivision. So we don't think it will have a negative impact on tax revenue to the town. So that's a summary of the bylaw. Are there any questions? I should say that this has been vetted by three lawyers, including town council, our resident lawyer, Jim Murphy, who's been really helpful over the course of a year, and one of the members of our advisory board, who's a lawyer, has made a lot of improvements. So this is the result, and we hope you'll vote for this at town meeting. Thank you. Do we have any comments from the planning board?
Just that, if you go back, it is kind of exciting when you look at that, how that could look, the development, the side-by-side, and seeing the trails and seeing, especially sensitive in my neighborhood, and seeing where it could have had some, you know, gardens and, and there is a trend towards people wanting to live a little bit closer and having a little bit less yard to maintain. Still, looking at those lot sizes, and I think when you said there were, most of them are approximately one acre and possibly a little bit less, which is what we have in some areas throughout town already in subdivisions. You look at Ivy Lane, those are one-acre zoning. So we're not talking about, you know, towns where houses are on quarter-acre lot sizes. This is, or smaller. These are, they're still fairly generous lot sizes, but the land is used much more creatively.
Thanks. And any kids in this subdivision would be able to ride their bikes safely around the entire subdivision on bike lanes or sidewalks. There are a lot of other changes in the rules and regulations that make it more environmentally and kid-friendly as well, and we might mention some of those later. But one could have community gardens and, I should mention, another way that we're going to determine where the open space would be is we'll also take into account adjacent open space in the town and trails to try to increase the trail connections. Any other questions? Anything coming from home? All right, thank you. I'll close the hearing on this article, and I guess I didn't formally close the hearing on the affordable housing article. Gina, do we have to vote on closing the hearing?
Yes, you can close them.
I can close them all together?
It's like one, yeah, it's one hearing with multiple articles, so you can do one vote and close them all.
Okay, if there are any, no more comments, I'll close the hearing on all four of these articles. Do I have a motion?
Second, third?
Okay, I moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Tonight, we also have a hearing on the rules and regulations.
You don't have any slides for rules and regulations, do you?
I don't.
Okay, so no more for the...
So we'll just go back to the table. I'll close this up and we can shut it down later.
Because rules and regulations don't go to town meeting, correct?
No, they do not.
They're just a...
And you do have a table that I think is in your packet. Is this in the packet, Gina? It may not be...
I have copies.
Actually, it's on the, I have a list of rules and regulation changes. We're continuing to work with Board of Health and CONCOM on this. We've come a long way. I think we've worked out a lot of the potential problems, but we still have a few things to work out. On one side of the page, this side you're looking at is a summary of the bylaw that we just did. If you turn it over, the reverse side has a quick summary of the rules and regulations Just turn the page over, yeah. So there are many, many changes, and it's a long document. It is in our Dropbox, and can we make it available publicly, Gina?
Yes, we could put it on the website.
On the website, okay. We could put it on the website with the tracked changes in red so that people can see what has been changed. First of all, in the existing rules and regs, developers were simply invited to talk to planning board or to the town planner, to Gina, if they're going to submit a preliminary subdivision plan or even a definitive subdivision plan. And I think Gina will confirm, they usually do come in and chat, but there's no formal process. We're putting a more formal process in place. We can't force developers to do this, but if they want something approved, I think it's pretty clear now from the rules and regs that they'd better come in and request a preliminary meeting, at which we would look at the site and review the environmental features, and we would with, or ask the developer to produce a couple of sketch plans to show us where he would place development and place the open space, and we would decide where we would place the development and the open space, and we could negotiate. We would try to agree on the best layout, but in the end, planning board has the right to refuse a subdivision that doesn't conserve the land that we, with the advice of CONCOM and Board of Health, think really needs to be preserved. So the placement, we can't, we can't dictate where septic systems are going to be or what their capacity must be because that is Board of Health rules, and Board of Health rules will apply. But we can determine where housing will be placed on the property. And of course, we would place it in areas that, where the soils are appropriate and where they are least likely to affect environmental features. Another change in the rules and regs is that the original specified that all subdivisions had, had to have road right-ofways 60 feet wide, and we know how wide that is. Our subdivisions have very wide rolls, roads, and they have sidewalks that are seldom used because people walk in the road. So we have reduced the right-of, the road right-of-way to 45 feet. That saves a lot of open space right there. The pavement width was 24 feet. We've reduced it to 20 feet in a subdivision. And depending on the design, sidewalks are not necessarily required, but where we want kids and people to be able to walk safely, we, they can put sidewalks or bike paths or walking paths. It's much more flexible, and the design can be specific to the subdivision. The present rules and regs require that the roadside landscaping, that is, the right-of-way that's not paved, has to be lawn grass, but that's not very good for recharging water. Rainwater coming off the road will just run right over lawn grass, and the recharge will be poor. So low-impact development principles require that runoff sites like road sides should have swales, native plants, plantings that retain water, and maximize water table recharge or groundwater recharge. As far as wells and septic systems, the planning board can approve the overall subdivision design and the placement of the developed areas. The actual septic design, of course, has to be approved by the planning board, by the Board of Health, I'm sorry, oops, Board of Health. And wetland protection, the same. The planning board can place housing with CONCOM's advice where it is safest for wetlands and groundwater, but the CONCOM ultimately will enforce their wetland setback rules. So we also require a groundwater impact analysis, whereas before it was maybe required, now we absolutely require. So I think the rules and regs that we've changed apply not only to open space subdivisions, but if a special permit is ever allowed for a conventional subdivision, these same environmental principles would still apply. So that is an improvement overall. And the rules and regs will be posted on the town website. Are there any questions from the planning board? All right. If not, shall we move to approve the rules and regulations changes and close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Are there, is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, the rules and regulations changes are adopted as they are, understanding that they may be amended still by the Board of Health and CONCOM or with the Board of Health and CONCOM's advice. All right, the meeting, the hearing is closed. Thank you. So back to the agenda. I think that wraps up our agenda for tonight unless there are issues not foreseen 48 hours in advance. Are we good?
I don't, I'm not aware of any other issues that need to be discussed tonight.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nice job, Marion.
Yes, no discussion? All in favor? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.[1768.88][1768.88][music]